Thank you for being here to special meeting of the South County Commissioners Court is July fifteenth, two thousand twenty. It's ten AM. We're in the district four room of LaSalle County courthouse, one oh one courthouse square to the Texas. We have Commissioner Nolani Alves, Commissioner Eraso Ramirez, Commissioner Raúl Yala Senior and myself. Commissioner Ibañez did not be here today. So we could rise and say the pledge of allegiance. For the United States of America, including all of which stands one nation, under God, neither will we liberate justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one individual. Dr. Roth here. We don't have too many people here, but I did see that Dr. Shields is here for public comment, but if you want when you get into the item, you know, participate with us at that point. Okay. And we're going to get started on discussions and our possible acts on the disaster declaration. And Chief Mendez, can you give us an update before we're out?
Good morning, commissioners, judge. Currently, as of last night, on the last update from Texas Department of State Health Services, LaSalle County has eighty-seven confirmed cases that have been reported within our jurisdiction. Can you hear? As of last night, LaSalle County, according to the Texas Department of State Health Services report, LaSalle County has eighty-seven confirmed cases. With those eighty-seven confirmed cases, as I find that report, the Cachula unit has forty-six additional cases, and that would be the Texas Department of Criminal Justice Unit there on FM six twenty-four. We are also reporting two detainees at the detention center in Encinal that are currently positive at this time. Currently, the fire department, we're running average six to eight either COVID positive or probable patients daily transporting them to Freeo Hospital. With that being said, we are being notified as quick as the state can do their investigations. Unfortunately, as of yesterday, they barely notified us of case number twenty-nine. Oh, excuse me, thirty-five. So they do have a lot of work. It is a big caseload for them, and basically they are doing the investigations and notifying us in the order that they come in. We're one of twenty-two counties in the region, so there is a lot of work for them with the daily case count increasing. Right now, I'm sure everybody's seen the news. San Antonio area, they are really, the hospital system is stressed in the San Antonio area, and STRAC is reporting that the rural hospitals are starting to become stressed. We do have in attendance the CEO and chief nursing officer, medical operation VP of Nurse, her title from Freeo Regional. So if the Commissioners Court has any questions on what is going on with Freeo Regional, what they have available strategies that they're going, that they're partaking in. And of course, Dr. Roth is on Zoom right now. He's our medical director, and so he's giving us the guidance on how we respond to calls and determine who does need to be transported to the hospital and who doesn't. We have had in the past week, a lot of instances with people in the community that they haven't met the criteria for transport, and in our efforts not to overload the hospital, you know, and following doctors' orders to tell them to stay quarantined and call us back if their condition worsens. Of course, that's all guidance from Dr. Roth. We're in constant communication. Cindy Williams, the EMS coordinator for the department, she probably speaks to Dr. Roth every day, and our department is following the STRAC protocols that the whole region is going over right now. We also do know unofficially that Laredo, the hospitals in Laredo are close to being overwhelmed with patients. So our region is in a, you know, we're getting stressed and it's starting to get into that bind at this time.
I saw last night on the news in Laredo that Mercy had no beds available, and doctors only had one bed available last night. It changes, you know, people, you know, get moved around in the hospital depending on the condition, the public condition. Last night.
Yes, sir. And unfortunately, it's hard for us here. We're part of Region Eight. Laredo is part of the state Region Eleven, so they, they don't directly report to us, and we are trying to work with them to get part of that reporting since half the county does get transported to that area.
And the reason I bring up Laredo is that the ambulance has to transport their patients to the nearest hospital. Where people that cannot have nearest hospital is Laredo. And since there's a fire station there, it's easier and they can respond to more calls if they go to Laredo rather than all the way to Freeo County and come back. So it saves workers on the ambulances, but it's also a fast response for protecting the citizens in Encinal, like Cachula, if you transport to to Freeo. What I was going to bring up while you're still there is that one other concern that we have is the state, which would be Dr. Lilian Rindzor, who's the medical director for the Texas Health and Human Services in San Antonio. And he covers a large area into the hill country and all the way to the coast. And many counties do not have a local health authority, so he acts as the local health authority. And they've been behind on all, I mean, on tracing. And because they're behind, usually what was first happening is at first they started letting us know there's a positive case at this address, and the patients would know. Would know. Would know. And so dispatch sent a call for EMS or law enforcement to that house, they would know that there's a possible public case there, and yes, it's possible. Well, what's creating the problem is for every law enforcement officer, every, every EMS is each call has to be treated as it's a positive case, if you don't know. And when you get there, they have to dress up and put on their PPE protective clothes, and it slows the process down. There wasn't one incident where a person had a heart attack and his family got really, really upset, but they had to put the PPE on. And in that case, you know, they took the person out, started working on them, the family came out and they finally the patient in the ambulance, they started locking the ambulance. And all that interferes with the duties of the officers. And law enforcement was quick to respond and assist, but they feel, well, you're not moving fast enough. Well, because of this pandemic, we have to take precautions to make sure that everybody's protected, including our EMS paramedics. And the same thing with, with with the hospital, they're worried about getting their, their staff and their medical staff, because if they get ill, then there's a shortage. So and there's some doctors that have died in Laredo, others that are sick, and it's throughout the states, throughout the world, that they are firsthand dealing with this virus, and it's very deadly for some and for others, they have no symptoms. So what's been very difficult is, is tracing the information, and we're not getting the information because the state doesn't have the staff to keep up with the pace of, you know, taking people down.
Yes, sir. And at, and at this time, the state has actually put out on their daily report that they no longer recommend flagging the addresses and dispatch to advise the first responders. Hey, this house is, meets the criteria with a COVID positive or probable case. We also don't get the information that we were getting a couple of months ago. So on some of these cases, we might have five individuals that live in the same residence that are all positive. But we do know these residents, the address, and they might be ten to fifteen people, extended family living under one roof. Part of the problems we have is we don't know which one is the positive case or not. And so the fire department has been directed, as we respond, we treat everybody like they are a positive case at this point, because we are just not getting the information. Also, so the commissioners know, last week, we made the decision, we've locked down the fire stations to the public, the doors are closed. The firefighters have been instructed to limit going to grocery stores, gas stations, to lessen the exposure. We, I'm sure the commissioners see that we're not doing screenings here at the courthouse anymore, and that is because the amount of exposure the firefighters are getting, we don't want to put the public in more jeopardy. Currently, we have two positive firefighters that have tested positive and one that is probable. So we're down three individuals at this point. We're still operating normally, but we do have contingency plans as we get more positive cases of how to still continue to operate and serve the public while taking care of the employees.
Hello. Mr. Hudson is here from Freeo Regional Hospital, and so is Dr. Roth. And Dr. Roth has been our medical director for for the ambulance service. It's done a wonderful job of taking care of us and level services we get. So I know he's a full-time doctor, regular fielding doctor. So I wanted to give him the opportunity to brief us and tell the local health authorities and, you know, then as well.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know if you, Dr. Roth, did. Good morning, Dr. Roth, thank you for everything that you do.
Good morning, you're welcome. I'm having some tactical difficulties this morning. I'm in a Chevy dealer in one of their little offices, and I'm sure they're going to yell at me at one point, but I'm sure not. So, yeah, we've been working, and Danny is exactly right, sitting in that car frequently, if, sometimes several times a day, about specific cases and tweaking our protocols. We tried to model the STRAC protocol. Those change frequently, and we're, we're not always given the updates, but as soon as we get them, we tweak ours, because we want to be very, very consistent with, with what, what everybody else around us, especially that San Antonio is doing, mostly so that when patients and their families push back a little bit on our, or a lot, on, on our decision not to transport, that, you know, we, we can quote that San Antonio is doing the same thing. And people correctly have been, been spoiled over the years, and then, you know, they expect they call and we transport everything. However, logistically, that's just not in anybody's best interest, including the, the patient that we may not transport. Because we don't want to take them from a potentially non-COVID environment and put them in a potentially COVID environment, which, which, which could, could, or could not be the hospital. And then that, as, as you just mentioned, there's, there's obviously the issue of PPE use. It's not an unlimited resource, and we really have to be mindful of how we use our PPE. We do not want to put our medics or, or the patient or the hospital personnel at risk by, by not using it and by trying to second guess whether the patient has, has COVID or not, especially given the, the fact that now it looks like a majority of patients that are COVID positive have little to no symptoms. So it's, it's going to be a learning curve for the community as well. And I, I just have a quick comment about the patient with the heart attack. I think, you know, unfortunately, the reality is, we do have to protect ourselves first before we go, go in and take care of any medical condition. It's just like firefighters, they, they would never rush into a fire without all the apparatus on, and the same thing for us. We should never rush into a case without protecting ourselves first. And I think, again, there's going to be a learning curve with, with the community. So really, what, what we would like is, is when and if there is, is issues with, with the community members that, that, that the county backs us up and says, yeah, no, we, we understand this. It's in the best interest of everybody, and we're supportive of it. And we'll keep you as informed as we need to as, on any changes. So I welcome any comments or any, any questions or any feedback.
One of the issues that we tend to have is that many people that test positive will post it on Facebook. And being a small town, it's a break by, and after they post there on Facebook, everybody in town sees them out. And it's been very clear by the CDC that if you tested positive, usually the doctor will call you guys and tell you you're quarantined, but that applies to anybody in the household as well. And some people say, well, I tested negative and too positive, but out and about. Well, the full family has to be quarantined, everybody that residents has to be quarantined until there's no symptoms in that house. And that's what we're seeing, a lot of those communities, that somebody will get sick, and then they're out, they're out and about. And it's causing a higher rate of contamination. And with the state being behind, you know, we no, no longer do aggressive. And the only way I can see around it is by setting up a local health authority, meaning that we appoint a doctor to be a local health authority. And they have control over inspections existing in the county. So that means anybody that tests positive would go to Dr. Roth, you know, or whatever he does that makes under him. Then they can start tracing. You know, it, it's hard because we have a lot of elderly here to get services, to get treated, and those health service providers will get their employees tested, and there's been some that test positive and they're only are not made quarantine, but then they're out and about. And we saw that in the bar scene as well, some people tested positive, yet those results weren't being reported to the state either, or the state couldn't find them unless they had different names. And I think he's taken care of that issue as well, if there were some communication problems between our local clinics and, and the state, and apparently that's been resolved.
Yes, sir. That's been resolved. I, I will say initially, back in March, early April, as we were notified of the case, the state would let us know who at the address it was, and then the state would contact that person, speak with them. They had a team that would contact them daily to see how they were doing. And then any other family members inside that residence, after the person was considered recovered, the state continued to follow up on the family members, because they are close contact inside that household. Recently, I would say in the past three weeks to four weeks, just the amount of cases, the state does not have the personnel to do that anymore. So they just notify us of the address, and as of recently, they're not even going to do recoveries. It has been directed to whoever is positive to follow up with their local primary care physician. That person has to report back to, to the state, and then the state would say, okay, recovered or not. That is a big process, there's a lot of a big area for communication errors, and people will get lost. Paperwork does get lost. One of the other problems we're having is we have a lot of people in the community that contact us and say so-and-so, they're positive, and they're at the grocery store, they're here, they're eating out at the restaurant, so forth. We don't know who those people are, so officially ordering them to quarantine, going to that next level, because they're, they're not taking that self-accountability to quarantine themselves. We, we have nothing we can enforce it on, because we don't know who these people are, and that's creating a bigger problem. We appreciate the, the community members, because safety is paramount for everybody in the community. We just, like I said, we don't know who the positive people are, so we have nothing to enforce at this time.
Mr. Hudson is here from Freeo Hospital, and we'd like to hear from you.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Court, thank you for having us here today. I want to make sure that I extend thank you to the judge. He's been very helpful in sharing information and letting us know where we can find PPE, where we can also find sanitizing companies, and I really appreciate you guys sharing that information. I want to thank the EMS, those guys are on the front lines every day, putting themselves in harm's way and at risk. And it's very admirable of you guys to do that. At the hospital, I can give you kind of some of the operational things that we've done, or at least some of the infrastructure changes that we've made to respond to the pandemic. And then I will leave some of the clinical questions for our nurse executive Cassandra DeBose. So at the hospital back in March, we converted what used to be our delivery room to a negative pressure ICU in anticipation of a surge. For about two months, we didn't think we were going to use it, and then all of a sudden, we, we are glad that we put those things in place. So we have used that a couple of times now, and we have converted two of our inpatient rooms to a negative pressure solution in addition to our certified isolation room that we have in the hospital. So on a, on a normal, under normal, somewhat normal but stressed conditions, we have the capability of taking care of three patients in an isolation environment outside of the ICU, and then we have an additional seven rooms to take care of patients that are not needing an isolation environment. In addition to that, then we have four patients that we can put in ICU. If it really got bad and we were in a double occupancy situation, we could, I mean, you could just double those numbers.
we could, I mean, you could just double those numbers and essentially that's what we could take care of, except for the ICU, we could put another two patients in there. But we couldn't double that to eight, so it'd go from four to six rather than four to eight. We were able to source some additional beds from the old Billy Hospital that we brought into the hospital now. We actually are using some of those. And we are currently today, we have 20 patients this morning, we had 20 patients in the hospital. Six of those are positive for COVID and are being treated for the disease. And we have had one death in the hospital as a result or related to COVID. And I'll be very careful in reporting those data and those statistics because I think they are a little bit exaggerated on the television. There's oftentimes lots of still morbid conditions that go along with those patients, but if they are positive at the time of their death, it's reported essentially as a COVID death. So a little transparency, I think, is needed there and it's my intention to give you all the facts, not just the ones that are glamorous, I guess, at this point. Some of you guys may have seen a video that circulated on Facebook and it mentions the hospital, it actually mentions me by name. And about this doctor in West Texas who identified a treatment for his coronavirus patients and had good success with it. Myself, I'd seen that, actually one of our board members had seen it and shared it with us. And our CRNA, which is Certified Registered Nursing Anesthetist at the hospital. We met in my office and we were just talking and that subject came up, she had heard about it. Coincidentally, we had a med staff meeting that day, mentioned it to the chief of staff, he had heard about it and said he was going to give it a shot. I will tell you that we have had very, very good success with that treatment. It is a treatment of budesonide, which is an anti, well, it's a steroid essentially, corticosteroid. And it helps with inflammation in the lungs and that's essentially from, I'm not a physician, I don't play one on TV, but feedback from the physicians is that essentially that's some of the things that they are dealing with is inflammation in the lungs and if there's a steroid that helps reduce that, then it should be indicated for that person. I also want to make sure that with some transparency there that I do not and nor does our medical staff subscribe to the idea that this is the quote-unquote silver bullet, it is absolutely without a doubt not a cure for COVID, it is not an antiviral drug, it is a steroid. And so I think Dr. Bartlett has had some pushback, I think, from the medical community for being a little bit exaggerative in his discussion of the treatment. But for us in Freeo, we have had very good success for it. The only patients that we have transferred out of the hospital since starting that therapy are those that are not being treated with budesonide. We have not had anybody in our ICU since we've started using it. So anecdotally, on a very small sample size, we've had good success with it. And I think that's a hope that the community needs and they need to understand that there's treatments for it in addition to the other things that we've heard. Different drugs that we've used, the way we position patients. We're able to access some high-flow oxygen and high-flow is defined as anything above what, 20 liters or something, anything above 30 liters? And it's basically a pressurized delivery and so we were able to source six of those. We have five ventilators now. We try to, you know, the guidance is to try to keep patients off the ventilator as long as we can. So but in the case that we do need them, we do have five ventilators and we have six high-flow oxygen delivery machines. So we are certainly prepared and capable of taking care of your community members as well as those in Freeo County and we're happy to do so. We enjoy the relationship that we have with the Saul County and we're grateful to be here today. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, I'll invite Cassandra, if I may, Judge, she can answer any kind of clinical questions that you guys might have.
I know you've been very honest and receptive of all of this and thank you for working with our department in reference to PPE both ways. Your department has shared PPE with us and we'll continue to work at it. I know there's a shortage of gowns, so we're still chasing gowns. You know, and it's funny that two months ago, only the gowns were $1 each and now the gowns are $4 plus each and it's just like a little piece of plastic, that's all it is.
It's a garbage bag, isn't it?
Yeah, so I mean, I appreciate all the work that you do and serving us as well.
Absolutely.
Judge, do you have any questions for me? I mean, so I want to say thank you, like, I mean, like John already said, I've been, you know, contacted Saul probably almost every day, I think. The gowns, the masks, all that kind of stuff, I think if we continue to work together, we can probably stay on top of that. I, just like Danny does, I report every day to the state, I've been doing it for about, I think, a little over three months now. Danny and I were talking earlier about the variations in numbers region-wide, you know, down all the way to the county and some of them, right, I think you kind of touched on that, how people go outside, or some of them that are in the region that aren't reporting to the state. Or this, the delay in the state being inundated with the numbers that they do, that they have. So we try to keep on top of that, we're actually working on some data internally in our hospital. I think we've mentioned about tracing, I think at this point, it's kind of just like manpower. But it's definitely on our agenda. John talked, I got, we recently got the six airvos, that is the treatment. I have personally seen the turnaround on the patient that gets it. We currently are on, we have eight patients that are, I'm sorry, six patients that are in our COVID hallway. They're doing well, they're doing well, one of them on the airboat. And so we have five additional, we got two vents from the state as well. And so we have the capability to take care of patients, they have been doing well. And so been talking to Cindy every day, I wanted you to know, you mentioned about the San Antonio community, you know, being closer to Laredo. I try to keep our numbers with hers because we have the capability to treat them and we have the competent staff to treat a small number of patients, like you said, we can put four in our ICU, we don't have any currently. We have some nurses that have ICU background. And so if they're being inundated, right, you take, the Saul goes to Laredo and they're up against a wall because they're in the ER and there's not a bed room. You know, those are the kind of things that we can talk about so that we can help y'all if they're being wall, essentially clogged, Dr. Roth knows what that means, but that's where we can help out.
That might be a decision to give them more, to give them time being, bring them up to to Freeo County, it's their capacity right now.
Yeah, and I try to give them the daily numbers too to help.
Paying on staffing or available beds, that's going to be a decision to make.
Yeah.
We're kind of language, and that's it, Freeo County and West County, the Green, San Antonio, Marina Counties have quite a bit of cases, so being on the I-35 corridor is just maybe that we didn't have the rates go up before, but before this.
I agree, and I think that, I think John and I kind of laugh at it because I think we were being over approaching things and we didn't. So when we do division calls, I think like twice a week, maybe three, we were implementing processes that San Antonio hadn't even implemented and I think that's what all facilities have to do, right, and not just hospitals, but everybody, right? We're smaller, we get harder because we have less staff, right, less resources, access to care. I think that's what's helped us. So I think working together and sharing ideas and stuff has really helped keep our numbers down as opposed to other areas that are higher counts. So whatever we can do to help you, again, I'll continue to work very closely with your EMS service and then again, with you, you've been such a help and everybody.
Thank you. Did you have a chance to speak to Dr. Ross about local health authority?
No, sir, we were dealing with some, trying to figure out some more stuff with the state, so I did not get a chance yesterday to speak with him.
The reason I'm asking, I mean, we can put that off, but it's something we should really consider. Department of State and Health Services has a PowerPoint that covers this.
Yes, sir.
And it says, you know, what is this authority and it explains a health authority is a position appointed under the position for local public health reorganization act. Health and safety, so chapter 121 says minister state and local laws relating to public health within the appointing body jurisdiction. And it goes on to say that that each county providing local health departments is not obligated to have a health authority and a DHS regional director would perform those duties. but those duties aren't being performed because they're backlog.
Correct.
Where we're at. And to be a local health authority must be in a composite position with preferable standing who is legally qualified to practice medicine in Texas, be resident Texas, take and subscribe official oath of office required by Texas Constitution Article 16. copy and open statement appointed officer appropriate the SHS office within ten working days of taking oath, it's a two-year term. We continue to serve additional terms reappointed by the governing body reappointed. He's considered paid officer for performing his duties. Health authorities. Basically, he's immune for his actions in case of an emergency and then he's subject to challenge in my lawsuit or any type of liability. And gives county control over public health emergencies, provides a rapid response to local occurring conditions, crisis situations and disease outbreaks. A higher degree of legal protection for commissioners and county judges in areas related with public health. And having a local health authority should also provide opportunities for public health grants and community assistance. And this is where we get that if he is interested in doing this, because in a way he's still doing it, because you're already having to face people, then they, the state provides him the information that's needed to control it.
Correct. I, of course, 100% is Dr. Roth and we will attempt to consult later on that. In my opinion, the benefits for the community outweigh the negative, but I really can't think of any negative at this point. Benefits is we know who's in the community. We can follow up. Initially, when we were getting that information from the state, we were able to follow up, make sure that those families, those individuals had what they needed. Therefore, they didn't have to leave their home. And now we're in a position where we don't know who it is and these people are leaving their homes, going to the store, going out and once again, there's no nothing we can do to keep them home because we don't know who they are. And that poses a huge challenge on us and the community. All first responders, we should know upon making contact at a house, okay, who are we dealing with, so forth. And of course, a lot of this is HIPAA information, I will say that, and we have to follow the HIPAA laws. But we've done a great job since the beginning of this with HIPAA. We've had no HIPAA violations within our organization, law enforcement, any first responder, so and we're keeping on top of that. Probably every hour, making sure nothing's getting leaked out.
Yesterday, we met and covered how some things are being treated. I found the March 2020 army flow chart, have you followed up on it yet?
Yes, sir, it has not changed. And following up on, with that army flow chart, that's actually what we have implemented for right now for return to work for the fire department. I'm not disagreeing, I know Dr. Roth might have more input on that if he sees that it's probably not a good practice. I know at a certain point, CDC has put out return to work guidelines for first responders and healthcare professionals. Also, CDC recently did put out if a first responder or healthcare provider is positive but asymptomatic, they are allowed to continue to work, providing they wear a mask. We're not at that point yet and I hope we don't reach that point, but there are guidelines for that process. The return to work policy that the army did put out in March, we're following it. Multiple agencies within our region do follow the same protocols as far as return to work. And daily, 8 o'clock in the morning, 8 o'clock at night, every person on duty does get a COVID screen at our, at the fire department. It is documented. They also, we work with other departments to get information. Our firefighters 12 hours prior to the start of shift, they are not allowed to take any fever-reducing medication. So it's not masked if they are running a fever. And during shift, they're not allowed to take that medication unless prescribed by a physician. We're, we have a lot of processes going on within ours, but the return to work process was of course, the army's using it and that's what kind of the region's doing at this time.
In the CDC guidelines, and this is what we kind of run into, we have a family, a family member tests positive, but the county employees test negative. Everybody in that household is quarantined until there's no longer
Correct.
Right from that household.
Correct, everybody would have to have the negative test.
And when that person, if that person does not quarantine himself, then comes into the work environment, then it puts those people at risk as well.
Correct.
And that's what is, so what I was looking at in CDC states, okay, if you have somebody that's negative, but somebody in the household is positive, once it's cleared and if he doesn't have symptoms within 72 hours and has one test that comes negative, he can come back to work.
Correct. From, from?
So the 10-day starts when the test results or from the date of the test?
That's a, it's a base, and they, 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 I think, right? And then they play around tests, right? And then 10 days, 10 days, they have to, so all of them, deeper, right? And they block, block for 10 days, right? And we talk about like 10, 15, 17 days. And they say it's a, they can go to work now and do that. They do a symptom base and they do a testing, which is two negative COVID tests, 24 hours apart. Now, remind you, that is for healthcare professionals, that's a negative. You know, H, I don't know if you're small stores and county houses, they can have their own, that's a good thing to talk about.
Well, in the return to, the return to work policies, what I was trying to do is cover the people that are negative first and then come in with positive. Because on a positive level, the party problem is they have to have a negative test before coming to work. And that's in your, your protocols from CDC for healthcare workers. But meaning your first responder, your law enforcement, your public officers, the people that see, you know, the majority of the workers have asked of contacting the county to the public. So I'm saying, hey, you should treat them all like healthcare workers and require them to have two negative tests before coming to work. If they've been COVID positive, if they've been negative, then they can follow your 72-hour requirement with one negative test.
Okay, that's kind of a work. Say I get COVID, right? All, all of them test-based strategy. They think, like, your hospital test positive, there's part of this that's happening. The hospital, we're getting, like, symptoms based testing. Because they all, I don't know if they were, they're, they're, we got, they didn't, they were, right? We don't know a lot of different types of workers, you know, like. No, they, they're not, no, people have, you're actually, and a lot of them, yeah. So, and we actually, we actually, they recommend that they not call, uh, kind of base testing. For healthcare workers, no.
No, I will tell you, there is a case up in San Antonio, Bear County area. I have a firefighter, she tested positive in March, one of the first positive tests. She is still testing positive today. She is still testing positive today. She has no symptoms, but she is still testing positive.
What like if he tests positive, and who who knows who you're positive or negative? Who who's gonna know, like, for example, Commissioner Yala, he just, he gets his, he has phoned that he's positive, and he's against nobody, so who's gonna know?
So at at that point, uh when you take the test and you get notified, you have a positive. It is the requirement of the doctor's office and the lab to report back to the state.
Are they reporting it?
They report it back to the state, and then the state does an investigation process. And they reach out to the person that tested positive. Uh, they're no longer contact tracing, so they're not trying to figure out where have you been over the last week or two weeks. Uh, you need to stay home and you stay quarantined. And we'll follow up, you know, follow up with your primary care after you feel better without fever and so forth.
Because I I know a guy there that I know I'm not, they wouldn't test it last Tuesday, and you know, they're all in the pool, they got a pool, they're all in the pool, hoping everybody gets it and everything. And then I think Saturday, they got the results on the phone, and you know, they're looking, hey, I'm negative, but no, I'm negative, and then they're. Holy shit, you're positive. Everybody jumped out of the pool, but they they just put him there in quarantine themselves, but nobody, nobody, nobody knows he's.
And and that's.
Positive or anything. I mean, nobody else knows.
And honestly, sir, that that is the problem. Uh, it's showing eighty, eighty-something cases right now as of last night in the south. We're up to only being notified of thirty-two, so there's forty, fifty positive cases that the state hasn't even contacted.
What uh the state has been hesitant of releasing the information, and part of it is because of the HIPAA. Um, but on the other end, on the protection of your responders and um something had to be done. And there's sheriff in in Florida that challenged the state and actually um managed to um get the aggressive information. And I don't know if it was uh a state lawsuit or federal lawsuit, but however, um they now have to give this information to the community to keep getting that information. Because we got to protect our people. What happened with the individuals, once they've been quarantined. And the doctor told them you're quarantined, and they follow the guidelines of the quarantine, whether it's ten days or fourteen days, whatever the doctor tells them. If they leave, it puts people at risk, it becomes a criminal offense. On the county level, it's a class A, and Mrs. Martin said through the email yesterday.
Yes, sir.
On the local health authority, it gets even higher. Because if the state calls you for a call trace, and the state, the state of Texas calls you. And say, hey, Mr. Rodriguez, uh I tested positive, who else in the household, if they're, or nobody else? And they find out somebody's there, under those current statutes, then I would have committed a past deed misdemeanor for lying. Lying, so their, local health authorities have more state, local and state jurisdiction. And it 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 increases that those people that don't stay home. If you have a local health authority, it goes up to a third degree felony, goes up to ten years in jail, from two to ten years in jail. And in university, Houston put out a very uh detailed pandemic that covered the Bruins, uh died for, called a bench manual in two thousand sixteen. Which, you know, you you're still reviewing.
Yes.
Which has all the forms for quarantine and everything you need to do because, um. At some point, if people don't listen, there's going to be consequences because they're putting people at risk. And there's actually a a district in San Antonio, it's protection diseases where they can file a local health authority or. The state can file injunction on someone that is very dangerous by not staying. Uh, in district court to get them committed. And that's the worst case scenario, it's more like Tycho's Mary, you know? Uh, but what we need to understand and get people to understand, when you've been quarantined, it's your whole family. If your whole family, you gotta follow your doctor's advice. You know, it it otherwise, we're not gonna control it.
One one of the problems that we have had over the past couple of weeks is we might respond to a person that is COVID positive. We're doing what we can do, uh but we have fifteen, twenty family members that don't even live at that residence. All there with us, and there's been a few instances where myself or Chief Martinez have had to tell them, this property is quarantined, you need to leave. They won't leave. And by the nature, if you're on that area or on that person that's positive, you should be quarantined. Once again, we don't have the enforcement to do that right now. We don't want to, because we officially don't know who is technically positive. The state has not notified us, they do know. He has no, if we don't know who the. We we do, and he has been uh going around. But who, how are we gonna enforce if we have officially not been notified that that individual is COVID positive? That that is kind of the problem here is we're not notified of who's positive just as an address.
We we have people that have put on Facebook, I'm positive, you know, I'm sorry, you know? But yet, you see them all over town. And one of the persons that we did is that just, just call the state, get the information, that's the person, that's the information. But we couldn't find anything related to been reported because all the doctors are supposed to report to show that they're positive. So we cannot act based on something that's hypothetical. You know, is the person saying they're positive, they're really not positive, but they have the symptoms, you know, because we have nothing else. We gotta have something done. And it's just not Butterfield, I mean, Butterfield got sick.
Yes.
Uh, Wayne got tested, he was cleared, he got well, but it's every single law enforcement officer, it has to be a law enforcement officer.
Yeah.
It can't just be the fire department and it's not.
Right.
You you, Butterfield, depending on if on the shift.
Right.
Because on some of these calls, call shares often they respond, and the other calls, they don't respond. And I know sometimes they may have some of the emergency because there's a thing called stack call. Stack call usually is when something happens, it happens. And I like to say the S word, but I'm not. But u- usually dispatch gets one, two, three calls at a time, and everybody gets deployed. The same thing happens to law enforcement.
Yes.
The call gets stopped, Friday night, Saturday night, holiday weekend, boom, boom, boom. So it it's hard to do so. But the reality is, unless you get a local health authority and um get someone appointed. You're gonna continue to get triggles of information of who's positive based on when the state can't find us, so they use the field box. When they can't find somebody, they'll call that, then we'll find them. But but usually, they're not letting us know because they're behind.
Correct.
So, and by the time they get back, it's probably six days later, and that person may have talked to a hundred people already. So what we ask the community, until we get the results, and we'd like to get a health authority uh done. Is that everybody has to treat everybody else like they're, you know, COVID nineteen positive.
Correct.
With your mask and sanitation, use gloves when appropriate.
Yes, sir. You know, uh, one of the biggest things is we're not here, we 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 don't want to be enforcement. Uh, we want to be able to help those that are positive, you know, take care of them, do what we can. But I ask the community over and over, I'll say it again today. There needs to be at this point some self accountability from everybody here in the South County. If you're sick, you need to stay home. Uh, there are people out there that believe this is just uh something made up, it's not real. It 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 is real, people are dying. Uh, and you can't expect all of us to be there every minute of the day. The people have to understand, it's, they need to protect themselves and they need to protect the people around them. Yes, and everybody has to do their part. Uh, we're doing everything we can. Uh, I know Chief Martinez and I and Cindy, it's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, uh for a few months now. And that's all we can do. Uh, but we need, at this point, also the community to step up individually, be self accountable. And do their part. They do their part, it will help slow the spread.
This morning, buddy, that I'm here. But if he lived across, um, I wouldn't worry around Johnson Street, yeah, she passed away. For what thing? Right across, um. It's near Longmont Hill on Johnson Street. Um, yeah, Freddie was on the. Yeah, she was miserable. So we had another casualty yesterday, but funny today.
I like what that's just, uh, when you test positive, I know nobody wants to put the word out there.
Well, people are afraid, they feel ashamed if they get positive. Is it something that's invisible, that we can't control? That you're gonna be doing your work? I mean, people say it's all bars, but it's not all bar. I mean, you go to the store, you go to the hospital, you go, you know. Go work and touch a pole at someone, I mean, it it is out there, and I would say it might even be airborne. So so it's nothing to be ashamed about, but we do have to respect that and respect that other people can get it, and it's not for the love of yourself. Do it for the love of the others in your home, for the love of your friends.
Yes. Uh, and that's one thing. It's not just for you, it's for the person to the left and right of you. Um, I I think. I was talking to Chief Martinez right now, one of the things about the positive cases and quarantine property and so forth. Just because it's on Facebook, or just because the patient said, I tested positive. There there's nothing behind it that we have enforcement capabilities on because we don't have anything official. Unless they show us something at the house saying, yes, this was my positive test result. Otherwise, it's hearsay, and there's nothing we can follow through with that. And and that's, and that's what makes it very difficult uh right now.
And hopefully, Dr. Roth will look at the roles of the local health, or if he's performing them already. And I think he has been performing them, and he's already contracted with the county, but it has to be the doctor. And it's more of an administrative role, um, to the uh, the patient.
And 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 we'll speak to him after Commissioners Court about that. Um, and after talking to, uh, of course, Chief Martinez and Cindy and myself. We're willing to take on that role of doing the contact tracing, contacting, following up, making sure those individuals have what they need and so forth. And it helps us with the education and hopefully getting people to stay home and quarantine until they do get better, um, to slow that spread.
Last week, we had test on Monday, right?
We had. Uh, Tuesday, we we performed two hundred and fifty-nine tests here in the Cuchula area. The city of Encinal uh had testing down there also on Tuesday, and I believe you guys had sixty-seven tests done in Encinal on Tuesday. And then on Friday, we had testing done, another round of testing here in Cuchula, and it was all. Ninety ninety were registered.
I told you, over a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, it went. And then right now, I do have requests into the state, I'm just waiting on final confirmation. Our district coordinator just did ask us yesterday if uh we could do a walk-up. Um, which means the people would not have to register prior, they could walk up and register onsite. Uh, which makes it a little easier, because we know everybody in the community does not have access to the internet and so forth. So, um, we should know something today, but we put in for next Monday or Tuesday for another round of testing here uh locally. Uh, I know the Texas military department, this last testing, they have the capabilities of performing approximately five hundred tests per day. Uh, with the new testing method. So that's a lot of people tested.
We uh. Set the people home to be tested at the park, because last week, one of the boys tested positive. And by the time you got the results, other people were exposed. And that part of me that we sent people from the second floor of chairs off, they were exposed as well. And what we need to decide is when someone gets exposed, and we find out that a positive test happened. Those employees need to get tested within twenty-four hours. Because they've already been exposed for a week, and those results should be available. But I don't want it to seem like, oh, I'm on vacation, I can get paid whatsoever, and they wait three or four days to get tested. They give them another three days to get, and now they've lost all this time. And the CARES Act is very specific that someone gets infected and will go there and get two weeks' pay. If they have to request family medical leave, they apply, then they get two-thirds of their pay. And we can be very generous, we gave them ten days, uh originally before the law, and now we have to give them another ten days. But at at some point, the employees need to be responsible because they may run out of time where they don't get a check.
Yes.
They may run out of time where they don't get a check because, um, we've had some people that have been tested multiple times. Huh? Yeah.
Okay, like like you uh, if somebody gets tested, you know, you come out positive, they work together, then the rest of the people that work there. They test, and they come out negative, but the whole family there, or they, can they work with y'all or?
No, and then who would cover it? If if someone gets tested for negative, but the family's positive. That employee cannot come back to work until that family's all cleared, it's clear. It was medically clear.
Uh, okay, I mean, then like they, she tested positive, but the the rest of them, they worked together, they they tested negative, but how about her, their family?
Well, when when that employee came back to work, she tested positive, the employees around that person have to be tested.
Okay, they tested, and they came out negative.
Yeah.
So they can work with us or.
But they can work with us, but that other person that said the.
Yeah.
It still has to be home. It still has to be home.
And part of the problem with the testing is, for instance, last Tuesday, we held testing. Everybody got tested on Tuesday. Um, so-and-so came out positive. The problem is, they worked the rest of Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and we didn't get the results till Friday evening, some Saturday. And now you had a three and a half, four day span that they were working around each other. And and nobody was using the proper uh PPE, wearing a mask, it's simple, just wearing a mask. And now they're potentially all exposed, and so now you have a bigger group of people. And then beyond that, then they've gone down to their families, and it just trickles and trickles and trickles. I, just so the Commissioners Court no uh knows, I was just informed this morning uh on the Laredo news, the city manager was live at nine AM. And the city of Laredo is moving to opening a hotel this Sunday, um, as an alternate hospital site at this point. So, um, once again, I'll get with Dr. Roth, and we'll we'll come up with something about transport to Frio instead of going to Laredo. Uh, Laredo sounds really overwhelmed at this point.
We we talked at the last meeting that. When firefighters can't be one team, so they don't get their families protected, protected, uh injected, or an employee gets. They can stay in a hotel room, and those are eligible FEMA calls.
Yeah.
So we got, I don't know if it was one deputy, two deputies that are in a hotel room right now. Because once they get clear, they can work, but if they go to their households, they're not gonna be able to work.
Correct.
So, and that's the same thing with nursing home, we offered the nursing home, we got local people here. They're going in a contaminated area, and they go home. So we offered them also to be able to put them up to be in quarantine so they don't get other family members sick.
Yes.
Uh.
And 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 that, that's been a big concern of some of my firefighters. Uh, not of the transporter exposure to the patients here, but they have elderly family members at home with underlying medical conditions. So their concern is having to go home and possibly bring something home uh to their family members.
Yeah, and we've had some infections in the jail. And now it's under control, I think it's under control at the jail here. Um. But if your communications gets, gets interrupted, and they all get sick, then you're gonna have a shortage of communication. So, part of this quarantine, then away from everybody else in your family until it's resolved. Now we get to the zip. The issue was, we've had a lot of concerned citizens with with the children and starting up the school, and I see that the governor took a stance to delay it. We, as the Commissioners Court, do have the authority to, to, um, close the school solely to the city because of, or just including the city. And, but our orders only go for thirty days. So we can close the school for thirty days, but we have to come back and act on it, unless the governor takes action and makes it longer. And I had a good discussion with Representative Yen and TEA has been very hard of wanting to make sure they, uh, they, uh, get the schools open. But it's been very hard in schools. So it's not that the administrators don't want it, it's, it's, they get pressure getting threatened by the state federal government saying, hey, you don't open, you need this funding. While we can make a decision to close the school for thirty days, but the decision to pay the employees is solely the decision of the school board and the superintendent. We don't control that. And, and right now, with the way we're getting the call reporting, uh, information or the lack of getting sufficient information to be able to put this under control, you know, I would suggest that if the school does any type of, um, opening that is virtual, and Dr. Field, I mean, you're here today, and, uh, I'm not sure if you want to speak to us.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for, for my main opportunity to address you. Take off my mask so they can understand what you're talking about. Uh, similar to you, I'm responsible for a whole bunch of people. Thirteen hundred and something kids, two hundred and fifty employees, y'all have the entire county. I'm sincerely concerned. The school is receiving orders from our headquarters, which is TEA, and the judge just spoke about that, and he, he laid it out there pretty clearly. We don't open the doors when school starts, that's today. If we don't open the doors when school starts, then we don't get funding for those days if we don't open the doors. We are prepared to do remote instruction. We had, we were forced into it last spring. But we've had, and we learned a lot about what to do, and we learned a lot about what not to do last spring. And we have been working this summer to prepare for remote instruction if we should need it this fall. Our school is scheduled to start by the current calendar on August the tenth. I think that, uh, with the, the spikes that we are seeing in LaSalle County, and we have teachers commuting in from Webb County, Barrett County, Frio County, it's, uh, it's dangerous. It's dangerous. If the court does consider closing down the schools, um, I would ask that you also consider allowing the teachers to come up to the school and be in their classroom, those that, that can, to deliver instruction remotely from their classroom. Some teachers and staff members don't have broadband internet where they live. So it, it's difficult for them to, to do it from home. A variety of circumstances, just, uh, like on your staff at the county. We have, um, staff members, not just teachers, but staff members. We have staff members that go home every day and take care of their elderly grandparents or, or parents, or those with underlying health conditions. They have children with underlying health conditions. They have other families living in that house. It just makes it a little bit dangerous. What I would ask that if, if, uh, just to state it again, that if the Commissioners Court does close, uh, the schools, uh, for the next at least thirty days, that we allow our staff to work. Our staff is trained on wearing the masks. We preach that hard. We do have the hand sanitizers. We, you know, wash our hands, all those things. And, um, when we do, I found out this morning that, um, one of our student workers, um, was diagnosed with COVID. And I've already spoken to, uh, Daniel about that and he was already aware. But, uh, I sent the whole department that he worked in, I had to send them home. Sometimes they can work from home and get a lot of things done. Sometimes you can't work from home, you just have to be home. But in order to keep the spread from occurring, we have to do that to protect not just those guys, but everybody in the community. We take that responsibility seriously. And, um, we'll make them go get tested if, you know, or whatever. And, uh, another thing I wanted to commend the, the County Commissioners Court for and the judge is the number of COVID tests that our county has provided for the people. That's wonderful. Uh, highly appreciate that. Thank you for it. That's why I'm here, is to ask consideration about allowing staff, teachers, aides, custodians, everybody, to work when we can. And, uh, if the children, if you close the schools to the children. May I answer a question or concern?
Dr. Field, I know there's been a lot of pressure and it seems that surrounding counties, older, doing the same as part of it. And the remote learning is, is, is difficult. Do you have enough technology for all the students so they can all be accessed, uh, virtual learning?
The answer is, we have the technology, yes. We have, school board has been very supportive. We purchased additional technology to make sure that we had a one-to-one student tablet or Chromebook or whatever device. The problem we're running into is access to the internet. Students, uh, whose families don't have the internet at their house, uh, we can address that when there is a signal. If you live that way out on the ranch and you have maybe one bar, that we can't, can't run a system on it. Can't run a computer on it. Not enough reception. We do have enough computers. There might be a Chromebook or it might be a notebook. We have enough devices. We are exploring the opportunity of, of getting maybe some hotspots for those that are within signal range to be able to, to access those. The state of Texas is, um, doing surveys now with school districts to find out how they can support at least partially financially support school districts acquiring these hotspots or acquiring these, uh, communication centers. The hotspot that we, we know of is, you know, little device, costs a hundred bucks or whatever, and then you have to rent the data or whatever. And, but it'll go, you put it on the kitchen table and you sit around the kitchen table. It doesn't stream out three hundred feet or three hundred yards. It's not, uh, it's not designed for that, uh, powerful. But it can give a household access. And we're, we're looking into those.
How about sports? No sports or anything?
Well, that's totally, that's truly yet to be determined, and I cannot speak for the school board. But in my opinion, I would recommend to the board at this time that if we don't have in-school school, we don't have at-school sports. It's not, it's too dangerous. Not worth it. Are you going to have contact sports? Like football, volleyball, and six-foot distancing? You cannot. Can you wear a mask? Maybe, but, you know, you still have a close contact. And you're breathing hard. I mean, you know, it's not like you can just say, oh, timeout, I gotta go over here and breathe. It's, uh, I don't see it occurring. I truly don't. Banned either. Banned you, you know, you blow a lot of droplets around. Do I want to have those activities? Yes, they're good for kids. They're good for kids. But what is good for the kid and the family in the community?
You know, he, he received representatives. And he, he didn't, he, he didn't say there was anything official, but he said his understanding and that TA has taken a position that if local entities, if it's the county, in the school district, I mean, and the city offices close the school, but they would not challenge or set budgets. But I didn't see anything in writing, if you have to be seen.
I know.
If you have to be seen. You know, so, uh, but if it was very, uh, part of the order, we'd go that only within thirty days, we gotta visit it again for thirty days. Um, but I think right now with the governor, he's suspended beginning of the week. He's not there.
I've heard that, uh, have not seen the announcement. I've read articles in the papers, online papers. It was sent to me that he was, he was considering allowing the districts to keep from opening quite so soon. But I don't know if that means pushing the entire calendar back, or if that means you just, uh, keep your calendar, but don't come the first few weeks. I don't know. Uh, you've heard, uh, reports, I'm sure, about the first three weeks of your calendar. That was before today. The first three weeks of your calendar, you could go remote if you wanted to, or you could come in twenty-five percent one week, fifty percent the second, seventy-five percent third, and all of that. Those things can be worked out at the proper time, but is it safe to come now? We did a survey of our, uh, parents and roughly fifty percent said, we want the doors of the school open. We need to have, be able to send our kids to, to school. Um, because remote learning didn't work for us because I've got to go to work, because, uh, whatever reason. Schools serve such a broad and serious purpose to the nation, much less Cuchula and Encinal. And it, uh, people depend on the school. Parents depend on the school. The community depends on the school. But at the same time, sometimes decisions have to be made to protect people from themselves, to secure, um, the family unit. And just, uh, we've got to exert our best judgment. Are people gonna get paid if we close schools down? Is that your question?
Yeah.
Um, uh, I cannot speak for the school board, but I would recommend that, yes, we continue to pay. If we can continue to work remotely especially, I mean, work from the school or work remotely especially. If we have teachers that come up and aides that come up and they're on their computers, uh, uh, working with the kids at their house and those kinds of things, when they, they're gonna need to have those rooms cleaned. We'll need the custodian. We'll continue to have to serve the lunches like we did, uh, curbside. Uh, every, almost, almost if not every function of the school will have to continue in a different form. I've been instructed to put on my mask.
Sorry. I don't know, um, y'all have any other questions? It's one of those things that there's just a few large employers in the county, and they all have, they have a number of them. But on the CARES Act also, it's only, it's only limited. Uh, you have single, well, you get housed, so they may not have a babysitter to take care of kids, and it is a reason, the Family Medical Leave Act, not only for the county, but also your lawyers, your bigger lawyers, uh, or fifty thousand five hundred, that they're entitled to two-thirds of their pay for up to ten weeks, I believe it's ten weeks, to put it in there, in your package. But that's only for a limited period. If, if this thing extends and it's hard because of this, we don't get it under control, there are a number of households that don't have babysitters, they have those kids in the ranch that go to school that, you know, have to stay home and can't work. So this, this crisis has hit everybody. It's not just one or two. Everybody is taking a hit on it, but some will take the hit much harder. And the year of learning the ball, I mean, you know, is, there's nothing as good of the instruction of a deacon at that level.
That's correct.
Virtual is, is secondary, but it's probably the same concern. So, but I think we're in agreement with that.
And our, our school district had been working for several months, trying to plan and prepare for remote instruction should this occasion arise. And we have prepared the old learning center, those, those classrooms, there are about twenty classrooms that we prepared because we were anticipating being able to bring all of the elementary kids back onsite. Splitting the classroom in half, putting half with a teacher and half with a, another class, another room somewhere, or a space somewhere with another adult, be it an aide or a substitute. And while the teacher was teaching to this half of the class, the teacher was zooming simultaneously, it's called synchronous instruction, over to the other half of the class that was with another adult in another space. So that they were getting the same instructions at the same time as the kids in, in front of the teacher. Is that the best way? No, it'd be, uh, the best way is what Judge said with all the kids. But that's the second best way that we could do it, and we were doing it to try to make sure that we didn't have elementary kids home alone. Because a lot of parents have little choice. They've got to go to work to provide for their family. We have single parents, we have older grandparents, and some can't help their kid at home with their, on their computers and things like that. And this was setting the stage for that. Because we are in what wave now? Two, maybe? We don't know. The pand- the pandemic of nineteen eighteen had at least four waves. I'm not saying this is, you know, another comparison to the Spanish flu, but what we, what I am saying is we don't know. And we've done a parent survey, and the parents do have the choice. The parents do have the The parents do have the choice of keeping their kids home if they want to, and we'll provide that remote instruction, we get to count that, that ADA. There are certain rules the T E A has put out for them. On the other side of the coin, the T E A said, well, if you got to take them all that want to, wanna come, you got to take them in person. And that's what we're talking about here today. Is that wise? Is that prudent? Is our spike right now slowing down?
We're still waiting results from last meeting. And, um, we're seeing more positives. I, I think it was eleven more positive yesterday. So, we're gonna be seeing more positives, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'd say, always hoping for thirty days, we do thirty days, and hopefully the trend will go down. I mean, we'd like to make it to where people feel, you know, safe, and people don't feel safe. Right? The teachers don't feel safe. The mothers and fathers don't feel safe. We don't feel safe. I mean, so I think we're all on the same page. I know it's very difficult for everybody. Uh, but we're gonna have to work through this together, I mean. And try to educate the people on what you do to contain it, because containment, when somebody says, father, get him to stay home, is very important. It's very important to be able to do that. Well, see, we're gonna have to have another meeting before August fourteenth at twelve midnight. We're gonna have to have another meeting and we extend it. We can only do thirty days at a time for a local disaster. A local disaster is supposed to be made for a hurricane event, tornado, severe hail, fire. It's not like a pandemic over a long period of time. Even the governor's authority, he has to come back every thirty days and amend his order to, to extend it. So this is all new to us. So we're gonna make mistakes along the way, but as long as we're in the same page that we know that for now, yes, we're gonna do, we're looking at it seriously on, at the end of the, uh, you know, thirty days, in the thirty days. But that's all our authority lets us go, but, you know, that's, that's a baby step forward. You know, and, and if the cases go way, way down, what Danny mentioned earlier, you, you said, um, eighty-nine cases? Eighty, eighty-nine cases, okay, you take those, you subtract the prison ones. And then you subtract the ones from the detention center, you subtract the nursing home, then you got a small amount. But what's happened with the inspection rate of nursing homes and in the prisons, those employees go in and out. But right now, we don't know what they've been, what they've done. Uh, so we gotta get a good grasp, and testing will tell us of where we're at. And we may want to consider another round of testing, we'll see how it goes with, uh, um, the National Guard next week, and if so, you know, we can do some more. Uh, Dr. Laredo are trying to get the rapid testing from Abbott Technologies, which is a pharmaceutical company, a very large, but there's some rapid tests that are usually false positives or false negatives. You know, some have a better reliability. The quality of the lab floor is a more reliable, uh, source that they've been doing, so we've been using mainly lab floor. But there are some companies that are advancing in the testings to being better on the feasibility results and then, uh, but if you get a test right that I'm there, then it saves a lot of time setting people on.
Yes, and the rapid tests right now are about eighty percent reliable. They're not up to a true, uh, PCR test, uh, those test results. I will say we're trying more testing, but eventually, or currently, every state, every city across Texas is trying to get more testing. So that, that's a logistical nightmare going on.
What, what I've heard from the people, we, we got refunded about two hundred eighty thousand this year. We expended the money in testing, uh, farming, overtime, and stuff, we expended the money, how it's like. And they, they're committing all of that across the P M O, it will get reimbursed. Um, but some of the people can afford to go to clinic, if they still go to clinic, they still gotta pay, they don't have insurance, they can't afford it, so having outside people that wanna go about going to testing. And I've had some other business owners, y'all can afford it, y'all can do it, you know, take it seriously, we have taken it seriously with testing. But four percent shortage of testing, there's, there's a backlog where you stick two or three days, but sometimes it takes five to six days, a little bit longer. So if everybody coming in wanting to test, it, it slows lab four down as well. And there's some hospitals that have their own testing equipment, um.
Do you guys offer testing at clear? Yeah.
They have to meet the criteria.
They gotta meet criteria, uh, and I know some places across the state went to the point of you didn't have to meet any criteria to get tested, and they've rolled that back. Now you have to have symptoms to, you know, get tested, just because of the sheer amount of people and, uh, tests that were being done.
The, the worst thing is you want with the testing is someone tests positive, and those people are in contact should be quarantined for a number of days. And we don't want them to use the test, okay, I came out, maybe I can go do whatever I want, I'm gonna go back to the river, I'm gonna go to the beach, you know, we're gonna go back and go to the bar scene. That's not the purpose of it. It's not saying, hey, I'd have to be like, go deep in. You know, and it has to be taken real seriously. You take a test, you know, you know, you know, hopefully you will, you protect yourself a little bit better because you don't create a situation again. Um, Doma, how? You have very few cases in Enseny, right? Huh?
Because of the slow reporting, uh, we actually got one last, yesterday or this morning? One, one of the two, yes, last night or this morning of an Enseny case. But then we also got notified of a recovery in Enseny that we just got notified two days ago that they were positive. But of course, it's, we don't know who the individual is, it is, it's just the address.
And, and for the public, you know, some of the numbers that we have there, it's possible that four, five, maybe more have already cleared. But the, the T C is going up really, really fast.
So, as, as far as the fire department, unless responding to T C J out here on six twenty-four, we consider that facility a hundred percent infected, employees and, uh, inmates. Uh, the nursing home, uh, I know they have a COVID wing, they have, they've been working very well with us, uh, sharing of communication, whatever they need, so forth. But we treat everybody as a hundred percent positive worker or patient, just precautionary. Uh, but also, uh, like the judge is saying, the workers at T C J, they live here in town. And they go back and forth, they go to the grocery store, so forth. And that's where I'm calling for that self-accountability because they need to be realized. You might not show any signs or symptoms, I'm not worried about it, I go home, I spread it to my family, we have a barbecue on Saturday night, we go to the grocery store, so forth, and it spreads. And then there's no stopping it because then the next group, and the next group, and the next group, and it's just gonna continue to spread.
You, I have some people that wanted us to close a nursing home, well, nursing home is privately run, and it, the state monitors it pretty heavy. But even if we could, what do we send them to? Some people need very specialized care. I mean, why do you send them to? Because a large number of nursing homes already have cases. And, and it so happens that many times, um, it happens to be nurses or medical staff that work other jobs that, that have been caused contamination. And that's what you call cross, they went one place or another. The jail in Enseny had two or forty cases, early, you get about three weeks, it couldn't be cleared. But what's different about Enseny is that prison is built where it has rooms that are considered zero-pressure rooms. The zero-pressure rooms do not circulate inside like normal system. The air goes and it's thrown outside, so the worst thing you want to see is a group of repairmen on that facility, you know, if that wing is being used. Because that, it, it's being sucked out, so it makes it a lot safer, easier to paint. Your T D or T J, uh, state prison system, versatile and facility unit, they, uh, don't have the type of circulation. So it's at large, so it makes it riskier, a lot riskier.
So for the Enseny jail, my primary concern would be not so much the detainees, but most of the staff comes from Laredo. So then they come through from Laredo, uh, of course, they have a job to do, uh, so forth. But they, on their way into work or way home, they stop at, uh, Love's, Road Ranger, those, those places there in, uh, Enseny. And once again, I don't think they're gonna get it from the detainees. I think it'd be more coming from home, Laredo. Same thing, uh, here, you know, with the, any employee. It's what they're doing in their off time that is where they're contracting it. And the judge is right, they feel they can go to the river, to the beach, to this, to that, and, and no, no worries. And that's gonna be the problem. How do you hold, how do you, how does an organization hold people accountable for what their actions are off duty? And you really can't. Uh, but once again, that's where they have to hold themselves accountable.
Because we have our, our staff and our kids' staff are, they have people that have the virus. And, uh, I feel that the managers have to take communication, if it's not with us, the cities, maybe to the emergency managers, because we're not aware of that, and we have all that are on this to go there, and I, I know of four individuals that were working until Friday that they found out that they were infected. So we are saying, we go to work and we go home, go to my staff, my staff, they go home, and they don't come out anywhere. Because that's, I mean, we don't wanna bring that to support anything. So that's what we go, because they go eat there. So I feel that the managers have to have some kind of responsibility and accountability to let us know that they've met somebody that has the virus that says they're positive. We don't care who they are, we don't wanna know, uh, we just wanna know that, you know, are you taking precautions? And I think Biden still answered it all, talk to the manager, but I've had test messages from people working here. They're very sick, you know, leave, the managers, and other people that are working. You know, there's nothing that I can do, right? When I told Danny and John, you know, because that's the big concern, when you have people that are working here, they're concerned. And these people, they, they don't know.
And, and part of the concern that I had was setting up a local health authority and getting Dr. Ross engaged. And he said, yes, it's great, is that because the state is receiving medical information with privilege. Uh, he being a doctor, he can deal with that information and he deals with the instructions. In this order, we did put in place that if a business has someone that's positive, that they must close for, uh, for exterminating, and they're required to make sure that employee is quarantine, that, that has a family member or, or is positive, according, if they're following the CDC requirements and their OSHA requirements, because we had mentioned, and we did some looking up, they also have requirements that they're also to protect people, but it's, but it's, OSHA and CDC are pretty much running the same thing.
You know, we got their policies, but it didn't say anything about those people. We did have four people there that are positive at the same time, that's, that's in the
But, but see, but right now, all of this is hearsay. The people say that person's positive or not positive.
The manager.
And, and, but has the manager seen it or somebody else calling them, but they still hit them?
The manager confirmed it. We confirmed it. We talked to the boss, we did some research. They did two on positive, and, and, uh, he went on to say that, and that's not gonna do what we know. It's not hearsay, I, I'm not gonna say that hearsay is hearsay.
Because, because these people, they're positive, and they have not been feared by the doctors to work. Then there's violation of the order e- either our web county or here, which becomes a criminal offense. But for us to issue a citation, we don't have the documentation that say that person is positive. And that's so, only we really wanted to set up the local health authority, then they have the ability to monitor and control them. Without the local health authority, it's gonna continue to go sideways and worse, and worse and worse.
I think what's happening is that people are going to test, and they don't know they're positive, so they're just continuing to work. So until they find out that the test takes, what, three to five days, three days? And that's the, that's, that's when they find out, okay, they're positive, then they get sent home. But some of them are easy tonight.
But, but we, we, we've seen, I've seen it already here that some people have been positive, the employees said they were asked to return to work. But they don't talk to anybody, it's not the case, you're forty, you're forty, go home.
A- a- and I've, I've also heard, um, locally, might just hear region-wide that some employers are saying, if you don't come to work, you don't have a job. Well, I'm sick. Well, if you don't come to work, you don't have a job, because the, the businesses are afraid to lose money. And that's, to me, that's not right, because you're just promoting the spread.
Mo- most of those people are protected under the public labor. They're protected. And we have the CARES Act, and we have to comply with the, um, the medical aid act. But at some point, we need to make sure that if they get exposed, if they're exposed, if they go to the test right away, there's, it's not a vacation, you know, it's serious, we gotta come over, extra dollars, uh, to work for a couple of things.
So my only question with that, Judge, is, um, for county employees, they need to get tested. Um, what, we have some county employees that cannot travel to Laredo, uh, because that's where we've been trying to get them to the clinic down there. Is there any possible way we could help with the plan for local?
Well, well, South Texas also does testing.
Okay.
Uh, it's sort of hometown. Thing is, if you wanna get rapid response, if these counties want to, you need to transport the county employees.
Uh, but, but it's not mandatory, is it? Like, like some employees that don't wanna go test?
It should be mandatory. It is mandatory. You wanna kill your job, you've been, you've been exposed, you're gonna get tested, you're gonna stay away for, for ten days, or one day, or whatever.
But, but they do gotta test. I mean, if you ask them, y'all guys wanna test?
If they don't test, then they gotta stay away for ten days, and then neither are they gonna get paid. And neither are they gonna get paid, and, and, and so they have no sense.
No, but, but what I mean, I mean, like, you just send, uh, go, you say, y'all wanna go get tested, they don't wanna go get tested?
Well, the thing is, if, if possible, the family, if possible, exposure, you're putting people at risk, that wouldn't be considered a, a board nation, so, you don't have a job. And you'd have to take that role because you could expose somebody else.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm just saying, because, you know, I, I ask them, guys, hey, y'all wanna go get tested? Someone say yes, someone say no, and I don't want to.
But they shouldn't look at a vacation, then two days later, I wanna get tested, get tested right away. And wait, wait for the results in two, three days, and to be fair, they come back to work. But it depends on the circumstances, how was your exposure, was it first level, second level, third level? There's a difference in, in the exposure. And it's covered in the CDC manual, and I was hoping we could have a little diagram, a little chart, kind of show a different example, that way you understand.
We can get that down.
I was trying to develop a flowchart, but it was, it's not as good as those computer connections.
No, sir, uh, I'll, we'll use our
And that way they understand, employees understand. But in this order, this is what I was asking. One, we order the county white mask. Two, the schools are closed down, but the teachers are allowed to return to work, provided they follow the CDC and social distance recommendation.
Teachers or staff?
Teachers and staff. Provided they follow the social distancing, CDC requirement. A curfew be extended, um, again, from, um, seven, uh, A M to ten P M, but this would be for everybody, adults and and, uh, two and a, provided that you're either working in the sexual service provider, you know, uh, you know, from the, in the CDC, say, hey, you're in a sexual service.
What were the times against?
Um, yeah, yeah, ten P M to seven A M.
Is it COVID?
But that'd be for everybody. Um, and then closing places that have people that test positive for, um, disinfecting, however long it takes to disinfect.
Uh, our recommendation has been disinfect, uh, close down for twenty-four hours to disinfect, and, um, I would like to have something put in there that they report back to the emergency management office, uh, what procedures, what did they do for disinfection? Uh, that way we have a record that, yes, this was completed, um, to ensure that they're actually doing it, and, uh, we, we can keep track of that.
And, um, there's gonna be another round of testing, possibly next week, because the masks are not for sure. Um, I don't know. Do you have anything else? I would consider, Dr. Ross, have, have you ever had any experience with, uh, the local health authorities?
Yeah, other, other than just superficially from getting information from, um, Bear County, pretty much. I know.
Huh? I couldn't understand.
Well, we've been, we've been hearing you about.
Oh, sorry. Um, other than just superficially obtaining information from, um, the, uh, from Bear County or any of the hospitals that I work at, no.
How long have you been a E R doctor?
Twenty-four years.
Wow. And, and you've still, you've been in Bear County for a number of years?
I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry.
You, you've been in Bear County for a number of years?
Yeah, all twenty-four.
All right. And I don't know, you want me to get you a transportation permission on the local health authority and then you come back? Because with, without getting the local health authority, um, there's not a plenty of supply. And then I know we're gonna have a meeting on.
We're having a meeting before this starts.
On Monday, because we have a number of things to do, so we can look at that.
For Dr. Field. We, we, we have a call with Dr. Ross at four o'clock.
Okay.
Uh, Judge, on the countywide mask, um, mandate, um, is it governor's the two hundred and fifty dollar fine?
Yes.
And what about the businesses and curfew?
Um, I mean, the, the business and curfew would be the same thing.
Same thing?
I would say probably what would be the same thing.
Does, did I understand you, to explain that the curfew is from ten P M to seven A M?
Yes. Adults and children, unless you're working essential services. Unless, unless you're a central service provider, you know, and it's listed by the federal government, it's a big list. The other thing, as part of this order, is if you follow the CDC requirements or return to work policy for healthcare workers for, for the entire county, and that's the one I mentioned that they have, and I put it in there, that if someone tests positive, they gotta have two negative tests before they come back. If someone in their family is, is, is positive, if they test negative, they gotta be, no symptoms in seventy-two hours and one negative test before they come back, and then hospital has to be cleared. So that's part of the order that we follow the CDC for health, um, for the entire, for everybody. I, I would say any, anybody, uh, currently positive would probably subject to that, but if, if, if they're still under doctor's care, you know, they're gonna have two negative tests. And what I wanted to make real clear, this CARES Act came in place in March. We gave ten days, COVID days, to all the employees. And speaking to Mr. Thomas, the attorney, the labor lawyer, the ten days that we gave cannot be used as subject to the CARE Act. So the CARE Act has a provision that if someone gets sick, like this condition, then we have to give them two weeks paid leave. That's all we have to. So if we send somebody home on second floor that were in contact, their days start running on the CARE Act. So if they who get tested for three days and then they wait three more days, they've already lost six days. They've already lost six days. And then we make sure that they're not gonna get even more days after this unless we decide something's fair, because we don't want people abusing those days and looking like a vacation. I had one person ask me, well, if you close down the whole county, can we go work somewhere else? The, the purpose of closing the county down is to make people stay at home, and we do. We may want to consider to go back to skeleton crew, and I would suggest three days a week on skeleton crew, um, no, well, not skeleton crew, um, open to the public, Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays, everybody's still working. And Tuesdays and Thursdays completely closed, but everybody's still working, but it's closed.
For the public.
For the public. And then all employees wear masks when you're in close contact with somebody with a, with a fever. So like, once I get out of here, if I'm masked on, and we, that, you're in the office in the room. Take off your mask. If somebody comes into the office, put on your mask, you know, just, uh, in part of the, part of the order. But on the CARES Act, typically out of your time sheet, you put COVID days. But those that are not COVID days, on the CARES Act, you then I would put on a time sheet, CARES Act, and then that could be it. Now, we don't have the time clock working because we wanted to. We gotta address it on Monday, and people are still filling out a time sheet. If they're not working, if they're not working, uh, we're, uh, you know, we're expecting everybody to fill out a time sheet correctly, you know, it's, it's, uh.
I think when you go back to your time clock, I think when you go back to your time clock.
I think it's affordable here on Monday. Uh, you may not be around, but, but for the time being today, um, as part of the order, um, we're gonna get the CARE Act, which is federal law, and go that way.
Judge, my only question on that is for the jailers, the deputies, uh, officers, and firefighters, we're always gonna be in contact, uh, with somebody. So how, how is that gonna work?
Would, would that glove work for their time? Do you know?
Well, well, this, this is the thing. When we gave them the COVID days, we have some firemen that haven't taken their COVID days.
Correct.
So those are days that we gave them. And if they get sick under the CARES Act, I mean, they can choose CARES Act and put CARES Act there.
Okay.
But, but eventually they take their COVID days now on the Thursday, and then they get CARES Act, they can still put on a time sheet, CARES Act.
And, and that's what I've told the firefighter. I just didn't know what direction had been given to the jailers or the deputies on that.
But you have some employees that are already exhausted all of the ten days, and then the CARES Act, you don't get to mourn that shit, it's a more check, because otherwise, you know, it's not fair to be paying those, um, more than others though, or what?
Correct. And I've told them after that's exhausted, they move on to sick time vacation if they wanna continue to check, and then once you're out, you're out.
Now, we can come, come by, I mean, right now, I'm not saying it's premature, but, but we have to have a good item and discuss it. We'd like to be with Mary to see how she's been affected. There's probably an executive session for the damn personnel issue, to see how it affects everybody. But, um, you know, so as part of the order is, you know, they're here, the CARES Act and the CDC requirement, and establish that we're gonna follow the, uh, return to work policy from the CDC and for healthcare for all employees. And the courthouse would be open from Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays, everybody's working, close on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Doesn't mean they can't answer the phone. They can answer the phone. They can answer the phone. Yes. Well, it, it makes sense. If you're out there working alone, fine, you wear masks. But if you've got this guy, working driving the same vehicle, put on a mask while you're driving it, take it off when you get out.
Put it on when you're.
You know, you know, they gotta make sure, I don't know what your mask, five, four, I don't know where you stand on mask, it may be. But one recommendation would be is based on the days that they're working, is try to get a package for each employee that masks of the month. And then put a mask of the month, uh, for each employee and.
Still good, though.
Not, but.
Is that a huge stick-up, Eddie? Maybe not.
We, we, we're doing okay at this point, but, uh, on surgical masks, we have, uh, plethora of that, not plethora, but we have plenty. Uh, it's the N ninety-fives. As we run more calls, we're using a lot more, uh, so these type of masks and the N ninety-fives, we're going through them pretty quick.
But the one you got right now, is that just one day or?
This is a K ninety-five, so it's not up to the same as a N ninety-five, but it does offer a little bit more protection. And you'll notice all the firemen now, they're all wearing these, just because, uh, we had to set some guidelines. As you make contact with a person, you have this. If they have the signs or symptoms, or they say, yeah, I was tested positive, they back out of the situation and change over to a N ninety-five, okay, for that extra protection. But these right here can be disinfected. As long as you weren't exposed to COVID patient, you can, we use the disinfectant we have, you spray it, let it dry, and you can reuse it. So they're using for the shift until they're around somebody COVID, and then they'll swap out again. Okay, so.
See, like, like these masks, I think we had about ten thousand of them. We have over two hundred employees. In one month, twenty masks, that's four thousand masks. So basically, we have basically two months' supply of surgical. They're still hard to get. The K ninety-fives run anywhere from four dollars to thirty dollars. Uh, and it's the same thing with N ninety-five, but they're hard. If we're a hospital, we'd be how many?
Couple hundred. And then this morning, uh, I got an email yesterday from Strack. This morning, uh, we got three hundred face shields. We picked up a thousand gowns and a thousand more in ninety-five. So they're trying to allocate as they can to each agency in the jurisdictions, but that was pretty much the max.
So keep, keep in mind that the people in the jail, the people in, um, fire department and probably the deputies, they have to change up the mask more often though.
Yeah.
That, that they just, they go to the Florida supply.
Yes.
And that, and that's what I would suggest that we pass as part of extending the order, um, the mask, closing the schools, teachers and staff, uh, will continue to work, provide social distancing, and following the CDC guidelines. Curfew, um, ten P M to seven A M. All businesses are required to, uh, to close down for at least four hours for, for cleaning if they have a member positive. And, uh, we're gonna follow the CDC requirement for return to work policy or healthcare, and, you know, first responders for everybody. And and, uh, the charges are gonna follow the, uh, CARES Act, um, for making payments to, uh, anybody that's out due to, uh, any of the conditions listed in the CARES Act related to the virus. And that's the.
I'm making that motion, Judge.
Motion. I hear you. It's a, in a second. And, um, in the session, Dr. Ross, uh, we're gonna cover it on Monday. It's gonna be a long meeting, but I would really, uh, ask that, uh, if you would consider it be our honor, if you would consider, uh, being our local health authority?
Yeah, yes, sir. Sorry, I, I just got in my car and, and I didn't get it, said it, don't want EMS any business. Yeah, yes, be honored to.
And, and we'll cover it at four. And apologies to public, get the items anyway, so we'll cover it at four. Um, all those in there, say aye.
Aye.
All of the folks in there, say aye. They're mine.
Sure.